All right, let me know when we're ready.
We're ready.
Okay. Let me say good afternoon to everybody and welcome to the May 4th session of Roanoke City Council. And our participation today will be by electronic communication, which is pursuant to Amendment 28 to House Bill 29, Section 2.2, that's 3708.2, Code of Virginia, and 1950 as amended, ordinance number 41703-032720, and resolution number 41704-032720. I can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. All right, I'm going to ask our clerk, Ms. Suzy McCoy, to please call.
Ms. Whiteboy?
Here.
Ms. Best Fitch?
Here.
Vice Mayor Cobb?
Here.
Ms. Davis?
Here.
Ms. Osborne?
Here.
Ms. Price?
Here.
Mayor Lee?
Here. Thank you, Madam Clerk, and a quorum, everybody is present. At this time, I will lead us in an invocation and followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please pray with me. Tell God, Our Father, we come to you first and foremost to thank you for this day that you've given us and another opportunity for us as elected and appointed officials to come to do the business of this city. We thank you for how you've continued to protect us, Lord, and guide us as we go forward. We ask that you bless the families of those that are bereaved. We've had citizens who have passed because of the coronavirus. But we ask you to encourage and strengthen those families as they go through this pandemic. And Lord, lead us as we need your guidance and we need you to take us through as we go forward. We give you praise, honor, and glory, and it is in the high and holy name of your Son that we pray. Amen.
Amen.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America
and to the Republic
for which you stand,
one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. Today's council meeting will be televised live and replayed on RBTV, Showroom 3, on Thursday, May the 7th at 7 o'clock PM, and Saturday, May 9th at 4 o'clock PM. And video stream through Facebook Live at facebook.com/roanokeba. Council meetings are offered with closed captioning for the hearing in pass. Each member of council has the access through the Zoom meeting platform and can participate in this proceeding. The city has provided the public with information to allow the public access to observe this regular session through the live broadcast on RBTV, live streaming on Facebook and posted on YouTube. The city has provided notice of this agenda and process to the public on Thursday, April 20, 2020. City staff, including city manager, city clerk, city attorney, and technical staff are present in the council chamber and are participating in this regular session. To facilitate the process today to ensure that all council members and the public can follow these proceedings, I ask that whenever a member speaks, including making a motion to first state the member's name, then make the motion, or second. At this time, I ask members whether they have any questions about this process. If not, I ask the city manager to advise if he has any comments. Turning now, we'll proceed to item number two, which is the presentations and acknowledgements, and we have none today. Item number three is the hearing of citizens upon public matters. City council sets this time as a priority for citizens to be heard. All matters will be referred to the city manager for response, recommendation, or report to council as he may deem appropriate. Madam Clerk, do we have any people that have signed up to speak today?
Yes, we do. We have three speakers. Our first speaker is Cesar Alberto.
Okay, let me, then let me make another statement that based upon Executive Order 51, issued by Governor Northam on March 12, 2020, amended Executive Order 53 on April 15, 2020, Executive Order 55 issued by Governor Northam on March 30, 2020, Amendment 28 to House Bill 29, Virginia Code, Section 2.2, that's 3708.2, Virginia Code, Section 15.2, dash 1413, ordinance number 41703-032720, and resolution number 41704-032720. City council will be conducting this regular session of city council by electronic communication means with a quorum of city council, physical presence in council chamber, and without the presence of members of the public in the council chamber. To afford citizens an opportunity to provide comment to city council during the COVID-19 pandemic disaster. Citizens wishing to address the council during this regular session of city council conducted by electronic communication means were instructed to sign up by email or calling the city's clerk's office at clerk@roanokeba.gov and the phone number, which is 540-853-2541, by 12:00 PM on May 4. Those citizens who have signed up to speak before the council have been provided a Zoom meeting information and will be allowed to join the meeting and address city council by electronic communication means. Madam Clerk, would you please advise us as who's ready to speak to us and identify them? Thank you.
Our first speaker is Cesar Alberto.
Hello, can you guys hear me?
Hello, Ms. Alberto. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Caesar Alberto. I am the Libertarian candidate for Roanoke City Council. I'd like to thank city council for hearing me out today. So as everyone knows, the governor has imposed a stay-at-home order that expires June 10th. However, the deadline for petitioning the signatures of qualified voters is June 9th. As of now, I've not heard back from the Department of Elections or the governor's office, and the Department of Elections has been instructed by the governor's office not to answer any questions in regards to petitioning. So I was hoping that city council can use whatever means you have to let the governor know that it's not fair that 77 members of the Roanoke City Democratic Committee get to choose the three candidates that are going to be on the ballot in November. As of now, I'm not going to break the law, well, the executive order to go door-to-door petitioning, however. Yeah, that's, just wanted to know if you guys are willing to advocate for that.
Well, let me say that's not a part of what we do here on city council. And if you have any question pertaining to the business of the city, you can and we'll pass it on to the city manager.
Okay, so then you guys aren't... Okay. So then, okay, so that's the position of Roanoke City Council, then, to just close the ballots off to only three candidates?
That's not a city council call.
I don't know who else to, right, but the city council is supposed to advocate for its city toward, to the general assembly and to the governor?
Well, you forward that to the city manager and he'll get back to you with the response and a written, written written response for that, for your concerns regarding your concerns.
All right, thank you so much, members of city council. You guys have a great day.
Thank you.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
Our next speaker is Kim McLeod.
Hi, I hope you can hear me. Thank you, Mayor Lee, and members of the city council for hearing me today. My name is Kim McLeod, and two weeks ago, I spoke in favor of reopening sections of the Roanoke Greenway system and the city using active management practices to prevent crowding. The city has stated that paved greenways will remain closed until the governor announces that conditions for Phase 1 reopening have been met. The city is said to expect a phased approach to reopening paved greenways. I encourage the city to be transparent in its approach to reopening and consider the circumstances of each section of the greenway system in doing so. Today, I would like to highlight one of the paved greenways that is currently closed. The Garden City Greenway provides the only bicycle and pedestrian connection from the Garden City area to central stores such as Food Lion and Dollar General. No sidewalks exist along Garden City Boulevard, and there are no other through streets in this area. Bike counter data shows that historically, the Garden City Greenway has a similar amount of use as the Murray Run Greenway, which is unpaved and remains open with less than 50 users per day. The city's comprehensive plan talks about providing a multimodal transportation system and creating walkable neighborhoods. Places like the Garden City Greenway are important parts of a multimodal transportation system and are sometimes the only walkable connections between neighborhoods. Reopening sections like the Garden City Greenway, which provides access to essential services, has a long history of high use that might lead to overcrowding and is the only bicycle and pedestrian connection for the area, should be a priority in any phase reopening of the greenway system. And I hope that the city considers this and is transparent in how it opens the greenway.
Well, thank you, and we also will pass your remarks on to the city manager for a response. Thank you, sir, Ms. McLeod.
Our next speaker is Steve Ambrose.
Hello, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, members of the city council, for the opportunity to speak today. Two weeks ago, with the help of my colleague Ken McLeod, I addressed council with a multi-phased approach to reopening the greenway that allowed for safe recreation and transportation options for our residents. On April 30th, the city chose to extend the greenway closures and made it known that it will be following guidance from the governor and will readdress the closure when the stay-at-home order is lifted. But it be made clear that the governor's current stay-at-home order does not include any specific recommendations for greenways and is thus unlikely to address the reopening of greenways during the phased reopening plan. As it stands, Richmond's own Capitol Trail remains open and active with specific guidelines in place for appropriate social distancing. I would like to stress that Roanoke City's current plan for reopening is flawed because of how our society will move forward as we continue to fight and control COVID-19. Unless a vaccine is developed quickly, social distancing guidelines will likely remain in place long after the stay-at-home order is lifted. If the reason for the greenway closure was to avoid crowding, what is the city's plan if the six-foot social distancing guidelines are in place for six months to a year from now? Keeping the entire greenway system closed is impractical and non-effective, especially considering it is a vital transportation corridor for many of our residents. We deserve a plan that works to ensure our residents have safe, easy access to areas where they can focus on their mental health, boost their immune system, prevent diabetes, and have the best chance they can against fighting the coronavirus. The city's current plan is little to support that, and I urge council to develop a comprehensive plan that allows our residents the opportunity to recreate safely and with proper social distancing. Developing a slow streets or open streets program is an excellent solution to this problem and a smart way forward. There are dozens of examples of cities around the country who are facing similar challenges and have successfully implemented open streets concept. Closing low-traffic neighborhood streets to vehicles allows residents to run, play, and cycle without the fear of getting struck by a vehicle, all while maintaining proper social distancing. The open streets concept is easy, requires zero construction costs, and can easily be removed when life returns to normal. So I urge you, members of council, and Mr. Mayor, to make Roanoke a true leader for bicycle and pedestrian safety. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Ambrose, and we will have our city manager follow up with you on your concerns. Thank you. Madam Clerk, is there any other?
No other speakers. No, no other speakers.
Okay, thank you very... And so we will, at this time, close the hearing of citizens upon public matters and move on to the next item, which is the regular agenda. Item number five is the public hearings we have now, and item number six is petitions and communications we have now. Item 6A is a request of the Roanoke Regional Airport Commission to present its proposed 2020, 2021 operating budget and proposed capital expenditures. Timothy Bradshaw is the executive...
I'm here. Anybody here?
I lost somebody somewhere or something.
Mayor, this is Kim. I'm here.
Okay, have we adopted the resolution? We haven't got, there's a resolution. All right, well, let me, I I need to see you, Tim. I know I can't see you. Okay. You go ahead and share with us what you have, or you want to make any comments?
Sure.
Mr. Mayor, this is Dan Callahan. The appropriate procedure is this point, if someone would move the resolution, second it, and then we can discuss the matter. So if someone would move the resolution.
Do you know Osborne moved the resolution? Anita Price second.
All right. Madam Clerk, can you read the title paragraph?
Yes. A resolution approving the Roanoke Regional Airport Commission's 2020 through 2021 proposed operating and capital budget upon certain terms and conditions.
All right. Any questions or comments by members of council? Recognizing that Mr. Bradshaw is on the phone and can answer any questions or comments that we may have.
Mr. Mayor, this is Phil Vespich. Maybe we should let Mr. Bradshaw give us his input, and then we can see if we have follow-up questions from that.
All right. Mr. Bradshaw, are you still there?
Yes, sir. Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay, you want me to go ahead?
Yeah, and show you folks some comments.
Sure. It goes without saying, we're all facing challenging times, no different here from the airport. Unfortunately, air travel is usually the first to go in a situation like this, and it's the last to come back. It's going to be a long road to recovery for us. It's unfortunate, we were doing extremely well up until March of this month. But right now, the way it stands is very few people are flying. There are still some people flying. The last, one day last week, we had 25 people fly on one day. And compare that to about 2,000 a day is what we normally do, so you can see what an impact it's had. The, not only the airlines, air service travel, but, you know, all the associated activities to go along with that, the rent of cars, the news and gifts, the food and beverage. So we're taking a tremendous hit financially. We're losing a loss of revenue, close to $1 million a month, not counting expenses as well, too. So when we put together this budget, we had different scenarios, but it's very hard trying to ensure for everyone to predict what the rollout's going to be and how long the road to recovery is. But fortunately for us, you may be aware that the airport was awarded a grant under the CARES Act. As a matter of fact, we were the third highest award recipient in the Commonwealth behind Reagan and Dulles Airport. We received a $20.7 million allocation under the CARES Fund Act. And the reason our amount was so high is because they awarded amounts based on airports' high cash reserves and no debt service. So due to our good fiscal management, we have high cash reserves and no debt service, so we were awarded $20.7 million. And those funds can be used to offset operating expenses and to, for loss of revenue. As I mentioned earlier, we have a tremendous amount of loss of revenue. None of the airlines have paid us, none of the rental car companies have paid rent. And also, we can use the funds for capital projects. So the commission and staff is going to take about half of that money, keep it for the next four years to offset any expenses we may have or any loss of revenue. And then the other half of the funds, we're going to put into the local economy and try to help create jobs, how to create some development for some capital projects. So our, our goal is to spend about $10 million in the local economy, not counting the monies that will be used to supplement our, our operating budget. This is the first year, first year in the airport's history that they've ever projected a deficit, but we, we had to project a deficit because that's what we're showing as far as our loss of revenue. But rest assured, the local taxpayers will not have to supplement the airport's activities here. Fortunately for the CARES Funding Act, we will be able to make up our shortfall in the coming year. We're going to continue on with our, again, with our capital projects. We've got a lot of projects that are underway right now. And we'll continue to move ahead, and hopefully this road to recovery will be a short one, and I'd be glad to answer any questions you may have.
All right, thank you, Tim. Council, any questions?
Mr. Mayor, this is Phil Vespich again. I'd like to ask Mr. Bradshaw where we stand as of right now in terms of the number of flights that have been discontinued or the number that are still flying every day, even though we only have 25 people showing up to take those flights.
Okay, give me just a second, and I could put my fingers on that information. We have fared better than others. Let me just pull that information here. Okay, give me just a second, and I could put my fingers on that information. We have fared better than others.
All right, we'll take your time, will you? All right, we'll take your time. You still there, Tim?
Yes, sir. So, okay, give you an example. Can you hear me? Okay, Charlottesville, for example, they are, yes, sir. Oh, okay, give you an example. Okay, we went from about 120 flights a week down to 63 flights a week. We're doing better than our neighbors like Charlottesville and Lynchburg. I think Lynchburg's down to 21 flights a week. So we've, we've lost more than half of our flights, Ms. Best Fitch.
Okay, thank you very much, Tim. Appreciate that.
Tim, you may have mentioned this, and I did not hear it, but do you anticipate more flights coming? I think there's a federal government really pushing to get allies back in, back, back going, you know, at least if not full speed halfway. Do you anticipate that helping you out down the line?
Yes, sir. The funding and the fact that we have a very strong business market, you may remember from our earlier discussion. We, the, under the CARES Act, the airlines have to maintain a certain level of service to communities, a bare minimum of service, and our service is above that. So the fact that we do have a high airfare market, we do have a good, strong business market, our market is stronger, so we anticipate to have more flights than the bare minimum that the airlines are required to fly. Because that's what the, for the airlines to receive the funding that they've asked for, the bailout, they have to maintain a level of service, and we, we will exceed the minimum levels of service. And if, you know, things can pick up and we start to see things moving in the right direction, hopefully we can continue to grow back our flights.
Great. Any other questions, Ms., go ahead, just go, you know, I'll say, I saw Ms. Osborne first, Ms. Davis, and I'll come right back with Ms. Osborne.
Hi, Mayor Lee. Thank you so much. Hi, Mr. Bradshaw. Thank you for being with us today. I had two questions for you, please. The first one is that you mentioned being able to continue with capital projects, which would put money into the economy and, and generate jobs. And I was wondering if you had more to say about that. Also, specifically, what is the current situation with your current employees in terms of them being able to stay on staff, any furloughs in the future? And then, that's sort of a two-part question. And then my second question is, how can we leverage this this $20.7 million federal dollars in terms of getting, expanding air travel for our airport?
That's a great question, number two, and I'll, I'll save that one for last. So let's go back to the first question. So we are currently, as you know, building a rental car facility, and then we're building a new center for the Veterans Administration. So those two projects are underway. We're getting ready to do a complete renovation of all the airfield lighting and signs on the airfield. That'll be funded 100% by the FAA. That's a, that's a project right here to replace all the lighting. We're going to do a parking lot reconfiguration. We've been working with the folks on the city staff about what that's going to look like, especially the entrance coming in off of Aviation Drive. So that's the next project, and then we're looking at building a large maintenance hangar and building a couple of smaller hangars as well, too. So those are the, the four or five capital projects that we've identified. Now, you've asked about the staffing. We were really trying to avoid furloughs and layoffs, and as part of this funding that we received, we have to maintain 90% of our workforce through the end of the, end of the calendar year. Fortunately for us, we were able to take the employees' time, use their extended illness balances, their, you know, their paid time off, and also the 80 hours that the federal government designated for the COVID-19 relief. So we, we worked in a modified schedule, allowing people to stay home because we wanted people to stay home to keep their loved ones safe, but also to keep a healthy workforce at home in case this thing got as bad as it was early predicted. So the employees have been able to keep their jobs, keep their pay, full pay, and this funding that we're getting is going to ensure that they will continue to be, have their funding and pay.
Right.
Okay, and then the second question. This is, this topic has come up lately. The airlines know how much money we received. It's public record. They know that we're good fiscal managers with the funding. So I think it puts us in a good position as far as bargaining with the airlines, because they want money, they want their fees waived, they want everything. So we are changing our tactic to sort of capitalize on that position of bargaining position.
Is there anything in particular that you think you'll be able to offer now with this extra funding that you weren't able to before? I mean, clearly, the stability of our airport is an asset. Is there anything else?
No, I mean, again, we've put a very, before all this happened, we had a very robust incentive program. And fortunately, because of our fiscal management, we have the funds that we can offer incentives and offset their fees and landing fees. So I, I believe that there, there are more in need of the CACs now than any, than ever before. So that's why I think it's strengthened our bargaining position by us having those funds. The airlines are aware of it, and so we can, we can have a serious discussion about the incentives and waivers that we've talked about before.
Okay, thank, thank you so much. I appreciate your answers.
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Davis?
Thank you. Tim, I hope you're doing well. It's good to hear your voice, and I know y'all, just like everybody else, are dealing with a whole lot of uncertainty right now. I'm wondering what you're hearing just from the airline industry in general with regard with regards to their anticipated, um, recovery. You know, we hear a lot, obviously, from local media and talks about airlines receiving a ton of money. And, you know, I don't know what's real and what's not sometimes. So I'm wondering just kind of what the inside industry is saying about the path to recovery for airlines, uh, and then obviously airports in general.
Well, most of the discussion and, and conferences I've had, uh, is that it's going to be a long, slow road to recovery. Travel, conferences, uh, training, people going on vacations. Of course, that's happening now. We think, actually, the leisure travel may come back quicker. But it, it really, they think it comes down to the confidence of the consumer. Uh, what, how they're going, are they going to feel comfortable getting in an airplane in, in a, in a tight space? Uh, you know, what, what's it going to take to convince people that they feel safe enough? The airlines have done a lot. They, they sanitize their aircraft every flight. Uh, they're also now starting to do, uh, only flying airplanes about 60% full when they can. They will, you know, the middle seat will be locked off or certain seats blocked off. So the airlines are going to do everything they can to try to build that customer confidence. But I think right now, Ms. Davis, it's just kind of a wait and see. But the, the experts are predicting it's going to take a, it, it could take years, maybe a decade even, get back to where we were.
Do you anticipate having to make any major changes within our local airport to accommodate kind of future traveler expectations?
Yeah, that's, we had that discussion this morning and we're trying to see what other airports are doing. Because of the nature of airports, you know, you are in close proximity to a lot of people. So what, what's, are we going to do is install Plexiglas, like some of the businesses have around town? Are we going to do the social distancing and have the markers on the floor? So everybody is watching to see what other airports are doing because they're much more, you know, much more crowded than we are. But I, I anticipate going forward, we'll probably see a lot of those measures in place, which you're seeing now with, with, uh, with, with the social distancing and, and the Plexiglas. What's really hurt us right now, too, is, is of course our, our, like everyone else, the food and beverage industry is just really suffering right now. So, uh, we're watching to see what everybody's doing. And I'm sure when we come out of this, it's going to look a lot different.
Thank you, Tim. And I think it's also important that people realize, too, that a lot of the, I think a lot of the, um, precautions that we're talking about, even though it may be up to the airport to put those precautions in place, most of the people who actually work within the airport are not employees of the airport themselves. TSA is its own, is its own operating entity. The different airlines manage their own baggage handlers and, and obviously the car rental places have their own employees. So there's a limited number of actual employees that work for the airport. Um, and it's, I think, more going to be what we would call in local government is unfunded mandates, where you're being told that you're going to have to do something. Um, and it's going to be at the expense of the airport in order to protect employees of other agencies. But thank you in advance for whatever comes down the pipe because I'm sure, as we all are, you're having to deal with an extremely fluid situation and more information coming out every day. So thanks for all of your.
Thank you.
Okay, Vice Mayor Cox?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, hi, Tim. It's good to be with you today. Appreciate all of your. Um, you've talked a little bit about this, uh, in regard to the previous questions, but are you able to say right now which airlines are currently flying from Roanoke?
Yes, they, they all are. Uh, American is still flying, United and Delta. Uh, like, for example, we just looked at the schedule. We still have Charlotte, 21 flights a week, Philadelphia. Philadelphia is probably the weakest one right now. Atlanta, uh, Dulles and Chicago. Uh, Allegiant's a little different. If you've flown on Allegiant, I know Mr. Vespich has as well. Uh, they, they don't cancel day of or the day before, but they are like, sort of really shrinking their, their schedule down to maybe once every couple of weeks. So to answer your question, yes, all the airlines are flying, you know, with very few people on them, but they are flying.
Okay. And, um, would you say that, um, for example, the 25 who flew out in one day last week, would you say all of those were predominantly business? Or was there a mix of business and leisure or other reasons?
No, I would say it was mostly just people traveling. Very few business travelers are traveling right now. Uh, you could, I, I, you know, I can just tell that by, by the amount of luggage they have and how they're, you know, they are. You could tell that the road warriors from everyone else. So very few business travelers are traveling right now.
Okay. All right. And just one other question that, that builds on the capital projects. Uh, and you kind of alluded to this, um, when you were thinking about innovative builds and, and strategies, um, but particularly thinking about the, the new building constructions and the, uh, the new entryway or the entrance way and the parking lot. Are you all taking into consideration, um, changes that you can make now as part of those projects, uh, reflect the, the changing reality?
Yes, you know, this is, I, I think all of us realize that we're going to be living in a different world after this. And it's kind of like, like 9/11, but much worse. Uh, 9/11 changed our industry forever and I believe the same thing is here. So whenever we, when we, when we launch these projects, we have that in mind, thinking about what it's going to look like going forward.
Thank you, Tim.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right. If there are no other questions, I'm going to ask a clerk to call the room.
Ms. White-Hooly?
Aye.
Mr. Vespich?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Aye.
Ms. Davis? Ms. Davis?
Ms. Davis?
She's muted.
Okay. You would think I could key this out by now. I've had enough of these meetings. That was an "I", I apologize. It was muted.
Thank you. Ms. Osborne?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mayor Lee?
Aye. The vote is, and the resolution passes. Thank you, Tim, and be safe out there.
Yes, sir. And thank you, folks, for your leadership. You're doing a great job. Thank you so much. Stay safe.
Thank you.
You, too.
Thank you.
Mayor, is there a budget ordinance on this or is it just a resolution?
Uh, just a.
Just a resolution. Thank you.
We don't give them any money. No, we're tied on the money now. All right, item number seven, the reports of the city officers and comments of the city manager. Uh, and so the city manager will come and, and give us a brief. Let me just, uh, share with you all a few basic ground rules so to help us get through this, I think, a lot quicker. Uh, I'm going to ask that everybody hold their questions. The presentation will have a break after the, wherever, two parts, the two parts presentation of the current FY 2018, 2020 budget. And then, as I said, we'll have a break. And at each break, I will ask council members to, in alphabetical order, for their questions and or comments. Okay? So with that being said, I'll call on the gentleman with the mask on.
Yeah, y'all look much more comfortable in, than we do, but that's okay. Um, I'm going to just introduce the item and kind of give you an overview and then turn it over to Amelia, who will walk you through the first part of the presentation. And we'll pause as mentioned for, for questions. Um, with the presentation, we're going to summarize where we are with the FY 20 budget and how it will look when we, when we end that process. And then I'll probably talk a little bit during the questions and answers part of it, if you haven't already gathered it, what the consequences are of that process. Then we will move to FY 21. Um, and this will really be our first opportunity to offer for each of you any sort of detail as to what we have been contemplating to get us to balance. We will also offer up a glimpse of how our enterprise funds may behave in FY 21 and what that might mean for us. And then a very brief review of the CIP and then an outline of the next steps as we progress toward adoption of the FY 21 budget. So similar to the briefings we've had before, although obviously this time we'll have the majority of the emphasis on the construction of the FY 21, um, budget. And before I turn it over to Amelia, I just want to remind you all that at the last briefing, I provided to you kind of some of the principles that we're using in the construction of the, um, the FY 20 budget and the FY, or bringing the FY 20 budget to an end and forming the FY 21 budget. And I just want to remind you of the FY 20 budget principles that we've been using as we try to end this fiscal year, which is, um, first and foremost, the ability to continue to deliver essential services. Um, and in order to deliver those essential services, we need, um, our staff resources. So the protection of those staff resources, um, trying to avoid doing any harm to the FY 21 budget, avoid use of the reserves. Um, but I mentioned last time that we were making some technical moves in order to prepare them for use should that become necessary at some point in the future. And then, uh, balance our budget without reliance on, uh, outside aid. Unlike the, uh, presentation you just heard from Tim, um, the airports were fortunate enough to benefit from funding from Congress that actually, um, allows them to make up for lost reserves. Uh, local governments, as you know, have not been the beneficiary of such action. Um, and so we are making the assumption that we will not be the beneficiaries of that type of action and therefore will balance our budget based off of expenditure reductions to match the revenue that we anticipate to be generated here locally. Um, obviously, if that should change, then we'll have funding that we can use to try to restore items as we go forward, but we will not balance our budget on those. So those are some of the, uh, the principles that we used as we tried, again, to bring the FY 20 budget to a close, um, for this year. When we get to the FY 21 budget, I'll share with you kind of some of the same thoughts that we used to construct that. So with that, I'm going to have Amelia come and begin walking you through, uh, through the presentation.
I just want to say thank you, Bob, and good afternoon to everyone. As we begin our discussion for today, um, several categories, as Bob mentioned, uh, we will start on slide three with the information that I have for you. As we noted in April, the impacts of COVID-19 on the local, state and national economy unfold daily. And we are forced to make informed assumptions regarding future revenue performance. Every category is impacted in some manner. We're forced to make these assumptions for the remaining months of the fiscal year and revenues to be received in July and August that will be attributed back to fiscal 2020. Starting at the top there, we have real estate, which is our current year real estate. That is estimated in a reduced, reduced fashion for collectability. Sales tax, we are still assuming the potential for a month of deferral and estimated reduction for performance. And that is 25% for the remaining months to be received. For transient occupancy, we are assuming an 85% reduction based on estimated collection activity. Prepared food and beverage, we are assuming a 90% reduction based on assumed collection activity. Cigarette tax simply assumes no growth and continued lower performance we're experiencing previously. Motor vehicle license, a 5% reduction based on estimation of activity and collections. Communications tax, a 5% reduction based on continued lower performance as we were experiencing previously. Personal property tax assumes a 10% reduction based on collection assumptions as well. Business license tax has already met its budgeted estimate. However, we assume a 90% reduction in collection activity for the remaining months of the fiscal year. Our current expectation for local taxes for the remainder for the total fiscal year is 4.78% below budget. Moving forward to slide four. There are still vulnerabilities that we have for fiscal 2020 with regard to COVID-19 and revenues in general. Each day and week bring continued developments with COVID-19 and the effects are felt, of course, locally, statewide and nationally. We continue to have concerns financially that revenues will be further impacted by actions of the Commonwealth of Virginia. You see on slide four, several categories totaling approximately $17 million still yet to be received from the Commonwealth. Um, I will note for you that these are revenues that we typically receive in the fourth quarter, which is the quarter that we are currently in. And we continue to monitor receipt of those revenues to ensure that they are still on schedule to be received. Because of the factors and the vulnerabilities that we still have, we found it necessary to make fairly aggressive reduction approaches in preparation for potential fiscal impacts, including expenditure reductions or purchasing delays. That response has already been implemented and our focus simultaneously is on the impacts to fiscal 2021 as it's being developed. As we move forward to slide five, this shares more details of the fiscal '20 approach to the, uh, revenue reductions that we anticipate. As mentioned, we moved forward with departmental expenditure controls and adjustments or delays. That impact is approximately $6.4 million and includes the items that you see listed here, inclusive of suspension of recreation programs, library programs, employee furloughs in the general fund, part-time employees, holding funding for selected fleet replacements, holding capital projects funded with one cap, one-time capital funds, and additional departmental administrative reductions. Again, $6.4 million, uh, with those as examples of the reductions and the suspensions that have taken place. The virus will also impact our funding formula partners, Roanoke City Public Schools and Visit Virginia's Blue Ridge, as you see noted here. Based on our estimations for local taxes for Roanoke City Public Schools, a $3.8 million decrease. And that amount is updated on a monthly basis as the months are closed. Visit Virginia's Blue Ridge, $424,000 approximately as a decrease based on, again, monthly updates as the months close. As you can see, it's even more critical that the Department of Finance monitor revenues and expenditures on a daily and weekly basis, but will report on a monthly basis. Should it be necessary, a recommendation will come forward to the city manager for additional expenditure revisions. At this point, we will pause for any questions and discussions that you may have regarding fiscal 2020.
I'll go right down the line and start with, uh, the distinguished, Mr. Bill Vespich.
Well, thank you, uh, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Amelia. I know this has been a, uh, probably the most trying time that the Finance Department and Office of Management and Budget has, has gone through in, in quite a few years. And I appreciate everything that you're doing to make sure that we, uh, end up by the end of June, uh, in the best position that, that we can, given the circumstances we're struggling with. Uh, the only thing I wanted to, uh, to really clarify, and I guess, uh, just maybe confirm that, uh, the adjustment to the funding for Roanoke City Public Schools is still based on the 40% formula. They will still get their 40% of the local tax, uh, that we have set as, as our policy for them. Uh, it's just that the number we had at the beginning of the year assumed that our revenues were going to be at a certain level. So, uh, when we gave them that number, it was based on what we thought 40% of those local taxes. And now we know that, um, those taxes are not coming in at the level that we had anticipated. So, uh, I just wanted to, to kind of try to get that point across that, uh, we are not changing the formula at this point. We are not.
Correct. The formula has not been changed. The adjustments that we are making, um, with discussion with the city school. The adjustments that we are making with discussion with the city schools is we are taking an average of what is still expected for the coming months. And that is to transfer to the school division on a monthly basis.
And at the at the year end, that can always be adjusted as necessary to get us to the right number.
Correct. After June thirtieth, there will be a settle up to get that number to the exact dollar of what it should be for forty percent of adjusted local taxes.
And that happens every year. Most years, we're in a position to add a little more to the school budget because of the great job that you and your staff do in terms of budgeting our our revenues very conservatively and our expenses, you know, if anything, a little on the high side so that we come out ahead at the end of most fiscal years. So I just want to try to make sure the public understands that we are not cutting our funding formula for the school systems. Thank you for everything again, Amelia. I, as I say, I know this has got to be extremely difficult and stressful for you all. And I truly appreciate all that you're doing.
Thank you.
Thank you, Best. I just want to follow up on that same question. In the beginning, didn't we, the schools recognize that this could be the case? I mean, they understood that when we got the formula, that there will be some years that this would this would happen. And so I think I think we said that they'll benefit when we benefit. And then when we have to make some tough sources to go along with that. I think that was the part of our agreement when we talked about the formula in the beginning. All right, Vice Mayor Cobb.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, thanks, Amelia, for your great work. As I read through the necessary expenditure reductions or delays under the six point four million dollar category, the first two things, the reduction, the suspension of programs, we all know that reality check and why that happened. But I just wanted to take a moment to commend our parks and rec and our libraries and really all of our departments who have gotten very creative during this time to create online programming. I think we've realized what we can do at very low cost, some cost, but it's such a valuable way of keeping people connected. And, you know, as a parent of two young ones, we see the benefit of that on a regular basis. So I just wanted to thank those departments for that, even against all the odds here. Amelia, I am rarely a pessimist, probably never. But I want to ask you, on the further reduced revenue from the state. If there was, if we were looking at a worst case scenario here and none of this came in, what what adjustments would we have to make? And what impacts would those have? I know that's probably not likely to happen across the board with these areas, but you probably know that better than than most of us. And I wonder if you can give any insight on that.
Vice Mayor Cobb, the difficulty that I see in any assumptions regarding not receiving these revenues is the timing. These revenues are typically received in May and June, at which point a vast majority of the expenditures we could consider reducing will have already occurred. Though we can certainly go back to departments and troll through as much as we possibly could, we would be in a very difficult situation in terms of reducing programs and services at that point. We would have to look at alternative measures within the organization in terms of, as we talked about not wanting to, any use of reserves or other implementation of capital projects that we could pull back from. We would certainly have to look at every possible opportunity that may not entail operations.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Ms. Davis. He's muted. I can't, let's see. Okay. Ms. Davis, can you hear me now?
Yes, can you hear me now? Okay, good, thank you. I have a very small laptop and I'm trying to keep my agenda pulled up and the budget briefing pulled up and everything on different screens. So switching back and forth is very difficult. Now, I appreciate Vice Mayor Cobb's questions and concerns. Ms. Merchant, I think, you know, I don't know that I have any questions to really add. My questions are going to come more in the twenty twenty one planning that is the next section. I think, you know, you all have done an outstanding job trying to prepare. You know, I think the only way you can describe it is it's it's as if you're preparing an A, B, C, D, plus an E, F, G, and H scenario. And nobody really knows where we're going to fall within within each item. It sounds to me, as you just said, with the timing concerns that you have, do we have the ability, if timing is an issue with the source of revenue, do we have the ability to backstop anything that we anticipate is going to come in? And, you know, I know we have, obviously, we have some reserves, but those reserves are really important to our credit rating. Do we have the ability to tap into that if we need to when we forecast that something is going to be just a timing issue? Or how do you, how do we? I don't know, how do we help ourselves if something from a revenue standpoint is is going to be delayed?
I think you explained it just as we are preparing Plan A, Plan B, Plan C. Should the revenue, should we receive notification that the revenue from the state is not going to be received in a timely manner, what is our next step? And that that is the A, B, and C plans. Those are the plans that we are currently working on. There are those within the Department of Finance who are scouring departmental budgets, any encumbrances, contracts that we have flexibility to step away from that we don't necessarily need to step away from right now. But should we need to, they go on that list. So we are working on that Plan B, Plan C. Should we have to pull those triggers and actually pull back from those things to the degree that those vulnerabilities should actually occur? Again, we have no reference from the state that any of those those vulnerabilities are going to take place. I mean, we're talking about public safety funding, HB five ninety nine. We're talking about PPTRA. We're talking about large sums of dollars for citizen-specific relief that the state has not indicated they're going to step away from. So our hope continues to be that they will not step away from those. But we will continue to contingency plan for that.
Thank you.
All right, Ms. Osborne.
Thank you, Mary Lee. Thank you, Amelia, for all of your work on this. This is a really tough time to be trying to figure out with any certainty what our budget is going to look like and what we can work with. I too was curious about state revenue or disbursement. And I wondered, you alluded to this a little bit in your answer to Ms. Davis, what the communication has been with the state? And what are they waiting on to be able to to distribute those those monies?
It's my understanding that we are still awaiting action by the General Assembly or notification by the governor of any changes. We have received, other than the information regarding the sales tax deferral, we have not received any further guidance from the state as to actions that they are going to take with assurance regarding revenues to localities.
Okay, and I guess there, part of that would be that there isn't really any set date when we would have an answer.
No, at this time, no.
Okay, so we're just just sort of in limbo, waiting to hear what what move they make.
We have, we do have a revenue analyst, Justin Hazelwood, who has joined our staff, who is following up on revenue leads with the state and with state contacts as well, as we are able to get more information as we go through the days and weeks.
Okay, thank you so much.
All right, thank you, Ms. Price.
Thank you. Amelia, I'll ask also add my thanks to you and your department and how you're handling this with such dependency, given that you're not really getting a lot of guidance and kind of operating on, we just have to, right now, go about the business of what are we going to do to save ourselves? Because it doesn't sound Calgary has come just yet. Miss Best asked the question that I was going to ask for clarification and to just make certain that folks recognize that that funding is not being cut to our schools based on our formula process. And the same goes with Virginia's, that their funding based on those established formulas. I just will say, I guess we're all waiting with bated breath to see what is the give us guidance as to what's coming over as we come out of this crisis. So thank you again.
All right, Ms. Twist Whiteboy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. By now, most of the questions have been answered. But I do want to say thank you, Ms. Merchant, to you and your staff. I know that all of the programs are important to the citizens of Roanoke, but I think that you all have taken time. If we had to reduce something or cut something, it's with the least impact to our city. So, you know, you were very cognizant when we had to go through and make those cuts. But I will ask, is it possible with the state funding, is it possible that it may not come at all, or it's just delayed?
The funding that we are awaiting is actually a fourth quarter receipt revenue. It's not that the funding is delayed. It is the typical between April and June timeframe for receiving that revenue. So I would not categorize it as delayed. We are just awaiting the normal timeframe for receipt of that revenue.
Okay, and my last question. I thought I heard Mr. Cowell say in the beginning that we wouldn't expect any of the stimulus. Would our revenue analysts protect to see if we might be entitled as a locality to some of that four hundred eighty-four billion of that last stimulus package? Or or it's not in for the localities, or they're not eligible?
Trish, the, we would expect that if and when the state actually decides how to be able to use the funding that they've already received from the federal government, there is the possibility that we will receive some of that. There is the possibility even that there'll be yet another package that'll get approved by Congress. And we certainly will be pursuing as much of that as we are able to do so. What we don't want to do, though, is we don't want to balance the budget waiting for that. We don't have that luxury. So so that was what my comment was at the beginning. Not that we won't pursue those dollars, just that we won't be able to use those dollars to balance the budget as we close up FY twenty and even as we prepare the FY twenty one budget.
Oh, I certainly understand that. We certainly want to don't want to count on something that may or may not happen to balance our budget. Thank you, Ms. Amelia, and thank you, Bob.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, thank you, Amelia, you and your staff. I know you're facing some challenges, which we all are. And we've got some tough times ahead of us, but we appreciate the effort and the work that that your show makes to have made to keep us above board. And so with that, we're ready now to go into the twenty 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 one budget.
Okay, I'm going to just introduce this just as I did the FY twenty budget as well. And then I'll actually come back again after Amelia has shared some of the preliminary information with you to talk a little bit about our strategy that we've laid out in order to actually include what we ultimately will likely propose in the FY twenty one budget. So I just simply want to remind you again of some of the the principles that we're using as we form this budget. Some of these are the same as we were using with the FY twenty budget. Some of them are specific for the FY twenty one. So of course, at the top is, we will continue to focus on the delivery of essential services. We will retain, though, our focus on our strategies and priorities to make certain that as we deliver those services, we continue to do those for strategic purposes. We will, of course, again, continue to protect staff resources to the extent that's practical. We will be mindful of FY twenty two. We have mentioned this previously, that it is quite quite possible in light of current economic conditions and what may come next, that we will actually see some sort of fallout on the real estate side of things in FY twenty two, which may mean we'll be dealing with something similar to this, if not worse, as we move forward. So we want to be mindful of that as we go forward. We want to take steps that are necessary and appropriate to support the recovery in the community as well. And again, we want to continue to protect reserves because I think even more so with FY twenty one, there are significant questions regarding the projections that we're able to make at this point and really not knowing how bad things may may be as we go forward. We need to hold on to those for any kind of unexpected expenses as we go forward. And again, FY twenty one, no different than FY twenty, while we will continue to pursue whatever federal funds may be available, we will not be using those funds at this point to balance our budget as we go forward. So just wanted to remind you of those principles that we use as we went in. And when we get over to slide twelve in the presentation, I'll kind of step back in and share with you a little bit of information relative to the strategies that we're using as we go forward in the development of the of the response really to the revenue information that Amelia will share with you.
That will take us forward to slide seven. As we begin our update of fiscal twenty one, there are some assumptions, again, for local taxes that have been made here on slide seven and slide eight. Real estate, as was presented in December, the gross taxable value increased by four point six three percent. Typically, our practice is to assume that we will be able to collect ninety five percent of that. Our current real estate estimate for fiscal twenty one assumes only a three point three percent revenue increase due to COVID nineteen, due to an estimated ninety three point seven collection ability. Sales tax assumes that performance in July will only be sixty percent of the prior July with increases monthly to normal activity by November or December timeframe. And it further assumes that there will be one percent growth during the second half of next fiscal year. Transient occupancy assumes that performance in July will start off only at ten of the prior July with increases only to seventy percent by the end of the fiscal year. Prepared food and beverage assumes that performance in July will only be forty percent of the prior July with increases to normal performance by November. Slide eight, cigarette tax assumes an almost seven percent decline. And that is just based on what we are currently experiencing or trend and performance. Motor vehicle license assumes a three point three three percent decline based on assumptions of our ability to collect. Communications tax assumes a nine point five percent decline based on current trend or performance. Personal property tax assumes a two percent growth over the levy that was just assessed in the current fiscal year with a five percent reduction for an assumption of collection. Business license tax assumes one percent growth over the fiscal twenty levy with a one percent reduction based on assumption of collections. On slide nine, as you can see, it is it is projected that the impacts felt in the fourth quarter of fiscal twenty due to COVID nineteen will continue into the first, second, and potentially third and fourth quarters, depending on the local tax and how quickly we are projecting it might rebound within the economy. depending on the local tax and how quickly we are projecting it might rebound within the economy. These projections are presumptive of how soon COVID-19 will dissipate, and how business and consumer behaviors might rebound as well. The volatility continues and is evidenced, again, in a reduction of $1.9 million from the amount we were carrying in April to the amount that we bring forward to you today. Over the coming two weeks, with the closure of the month of April and monitoring of the revenues received in May, these figures will be revised as appropriate. We'll also continue to monitor updates from the Commonwealth and work with neighboring jurisdictions to share information. So, as you see here on slide nine, the anticipated reduction in local taxes from fiscal '20 to the potential recommended budget local taxes is 1.15% or a $2.3 million reduction. On slide 10, the total revenue picture shows a 0.56% reduction. Non-local tax revenues are estimated to surpass the fiscal 2020 adopted budget by about $670,000, for an estimated general fund total of $297.8 million, or a 0.56% decrease. But again, local taxes are anticipated to decrease almost $2.3 million or 1.15% from the fiscal '20 adopted total. Slide 11. While the anticipated growth in non-local taxes is welcome, again, it is offset by expense needs. The anticipated performance of local taxes is unfortunately what I continue to highlight. While the growth in real estate and business license taxes are welcome, we must recognize the declines in transient occupancy, prepared food and beverage, communications, sales tax, as well as declines in cigarette tax, motor vehicle license, and personal property are factors that we have to take into consideration for that overall tax decline of 1.15%. Our response must be to follow specific strategies to budget adoption on slide 12.
And I'm just gonna jump in here as, as Amelia transitions into the strategy. So, obviously, as was indicated from the, the revenue portion, there's a certain amount of action that we need to take relative to expenditure reductions just to be able to make up for the anticipated loss of revenue. In addition to that, there are unobvable cost increases that we will need to deal with, as well as some initiatives that, while new, are still critical in terms of those priorities that I mentioned as well. So, our challenge is, not only do we need to identify expenditure reductions that, again, make up for the revenue, but also, if you will, clear space for those increases in expenses that are unavoidable or tied to an initiative. And then finally, because there's so much uncertainty associated with the projections themselves, we also don't want to cut that right to the, the limit of what we are projecting at this point. We need a bit of a buffer or contingency associated with that. So, that's the monetary side of it. The, the non-monetary part of what guided how we're creating the strategies that Amelia's gonna walk you through are that, by and large, based on council retreats, based on strategic plans, based off of citizen surveys, the, the organization that we've constructed, both the services that we're able to provide, the capital that we're able to actually develop and purchase, and the external agencies that we fund are delivering the type of city that largely we want to be able to deliver, and the types of services we want to be able to deliver. And as folks know before, the COVID issues, we were progressing in exactly the direction that we had hoped that we would be, probably not as fast or as well as folks would ultimately at any point like, but at least we were progressing in that manner. And so, as we've gone about developing the strategies for this, we've tried to keep that in mind. And what that leads us to is ultimately trying to avoid the complete elimination of particular categories of budget expenditures, if you will, and instead try to be a little more strategic and a little more surgical as we go through. There are a few instances, as we go through this, that you'll see where it was necessary to completely eliminate some funding in order to free up enough funding as not to eliminate even more projects or more programs. So, so that was a part of the strategy that went into, into that. And then this slide 12 that Amelia will walk you through, kind of sort of details exactly how we took those steps. And then the subsequent information is really the, the numbers, if you will, behind that approach and behind that strategy.
So, as we begin our discussion on slide 12, there are five bulleted items here that detail, as Bob mentioned, what those strategies are as we've gone through the, the work of developing what comes before you today. First strategy is funding the highest base and supplemental priority services and programs. Next, funding those nondiscretionary cost increases. Prioritize remaining base and supplemental services and programs. The pay increase has been removed. And then there are basic expenditure reductions as necessary. Slide 13 shares with you by priority where we stand today with base budgets at $296.4 million, supplementals totaling $3.1 million, for a proposed total of $299.5 million. And in subsequent slides, we'll walk through a little more detail regarding the, what encompasses those supplementals. Again, as you see there at the very top, under education, RONOCITY public schools, $82.7 million. That is strictly driven by the 40% of adjusted local taxes formula applied to our local tax estimate today. On slide 14 and slide 15, we wanted to share with you today some examples of the supplemental expenditures that are under consideration. This is not an exhaustive list of those supplementals. There are, of course, some that are just administrative, right sizing types of supplementals, but we did want to give you a sense of some of the new services that are included into the base budget potentially, and existing services which require additional funding. Again, there are some right sizing elements, some that are contractual, that require additional funding, some are safety related, some that have a higher cost of operating, and some that are overhead related. Under education and RCPS, if you'll recall on the prior slide, there was $8,000 relative to education that is strictly related to utilities at the expanded libraries in terms of the additional utility costs that we are expecting in the branches. Under community safety, just point out a couple of items there. The gun violence task force, additional operating costs, the 811, 911 facility, as we currently need to increase the, add those to the existing budget. We have increases for the jail medical contract, additional support necessary for the police body worn cameras, slight increase for the regional juvenile detention expenses. Under human services, right sizing the funding level needed for cremations. Under infrastructure, technology support, livability, the relocation of the sealed trash compactor, recycling fees as well. Good government, the tax treasury system project support, as well as cybersecurity increases and property insurance increases that are necessary. Under economy, the financial stability program and the microloan program, as well as additional funding for the enterprise zone annual support. Under non-departmental, an increase based on our current CIP plans for debt service, civic center debt service based on our bond issuance prior activities, and right sizing some worker compensation budgeted items. On slide 15, under the external agency category, additional funding for each of the items that you see listed here, and some additional items which were smaller and membership based. Blue Ridge Behavioral Healthcare, about $38,000 increase there. The Health Department, 2% increase in funding. The Hotel Rona Conference Center Commission, based on our estimation of 1% sales tax, a direct offset to the expenditure budget. RONOCenter for Animal Control and Protection, a 6% increase. The RONOC Regional Partnership, a very slight increase there. RONOC Regional Small Business Development Center, an increase there to support economic development activity, and a very slight increase with the RONOC Valley Greenway Commission as well. We move forward to slide 16. After sharing with you the revenue estimate for today and the estimate for expenses, today, the variance that we bring before you is approximately $1.7 million. The charge before us for the last month has been developing a mechanism for closing that variance and preparing a viable course of action in the event that the COVID impacts, COVID-19 impacts on local taxes were even more substantial than currently noted, in addition to closing that gap. Departments went and did the work of identifying viable expenditure reductions from their base budgets, as well as supplementals, to enable the formulation of a course of action to balance the budget and to create a potential contingency for COVID-19. Examples of the expenditure decreases are noted on the next two slides. On slide 17, again, by priority, in the area of education, the potential reduction is the elimination of weekday evening hours at the main library. Community safety, there are several items listed here, some administrative, dare operating expense reduction, the police accreditation support reduction, requiring a change in the methodology, police technology contracts reductions as, as potentially available, deer calling deferral. Under human services, we have no items listed there that were substantive. Under infrastructure, a reduction in alley maintenance, a reduction in fleet capital funding, a reduction in paving funding, and a reduction in the purchase of snow chemicals, snow removal chemicals. Under livability, an elimination of one full day of operation at neighborhood branches, a reduction in neighborhood services to be identified, closing the pools for two seasons, reducing the level of purchases for books and materials for the libraries, and a reduction in the deployment of staff for code enforcement. On slide 18, under good government, a reduction in the funding for council training and special events funding, a reduction as possible in external audit costs, the elimination of stipends for the juvenile and domestic relations court, as well as the general district court, a reduction in funding as possible for the legislative liaison to be negotiated. Under the economy priority, a deferral of the annual business appreciation luncheon, and a reduction in support for the strategic special projects activity in economy. Under non-departmental, the proposal is a reduction in the peak service provided by GRTC. In total, across each of the seven priority areas, this would impact 20 positions. 17 of them are vacant, three are filled. As it relates to external agencies, as you see listed categorically, the first two, arts and cultural funding and human services funding, there is a proposal to reduce the arts commission, reduce center in the square funding, defer cultural endowment funding, reduce sister cities funding. Under the human services priority, reduction in the human services committee funding level, and a reduction to the funding level for TAB. Under external agencies, further, there is a recommendation potentially to eliminate funding for the I-73 Coalition, reduce funding for the RONOC Valley Broadband Authority, a reduction in funding for RV TV based on the budget that has been negotiated and submitted, eliminate funding for the Trans Dominion Express, reduce funding for the Virginia Cooperative Extension, and reduce funding allocations and allowances for sponsorships during the course of the fiscal year. Moving forward to panel 19. The value of the reductions on the prior two slides is approximately $3.5 million. If each of those reductions is accepted and comes forward with a recommended budget, it could create the ability for us to set aside approximately $1.7 million as a COVID-19 contingency to be held in the event that revenues perform weaker than what we are currently projecting. On slide 20. As an administrative team, we are preparing a staged contingency plan in the event that the revenues received are lower. As mentioned previously, daily, weekly, and monthly monitoring of revenues and expenditures must occur with a goal of quarterly determination of necessary expenditure adjustments based on, on the reality that unfolds in front of us. There are other budget matters that exist before us as well. On slide 21. You may recall that briefings were brought before city council on October the 8th and February 3rd regarding the real estate tax abatement program. The program expiration requires consideration and reauthorization with budget adoption. In preparation, the required city code amendments have been drafted for consideration. In addition, there are several fee compendium amendments that will come before council after July 1st that are listed here on slide 21. None of the amendments on slide 21 for the fee compendium amendments are substantial, but they are deemed best practice and are necessary to be updated. Additional information regarding these and a request for council action would come forward after July 1st. Again, we anticipate there would be no fee compendium adjustments requested with budget adoption. On slide 22, we move into discussions of the enterprise fund. On slide twenty-two, we move into discussions of the enterprise funds and other considerations. For the parking funds, revenues for fiscal twenty-one are projected to decline by twelve percent. Or approximately four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. In response to that projection, expenses are to be adapted to lower expectations as well. We don't anticipate there to be any request for fee increases for fiscal twenty-one. The future hotel or garage project design process has been temporarily suspended. When that resumes and moves forward, it will require a future fee increase. For the Burgland Center, we continue to watch uncertainty with the entertainment industry. The operating subsidy in our current budget projections is level funded. Based on the current plan for restart of activity with the information that we currently have and the events which have been rescheduled. The expenses for the Burgland Center will be managed based on the timing of the events that are anticipated to come back online. But we do want to note that there is a certain level of risk associated with the subsidy. The actual subsidy exceeding the budget should the entertainment industry not react as we are currently expecting. On slide twenty-three, the stormwater fund. The stormwater fund will experience a challenge with maintaining the level of capital projects funding. If grant funding declines and will have difficulty addressing future identified operating needs. Again, if grant funding declines. There has been a previously identified need to increase the fee for the stormwater fund. But that will be curtailed until the future. If the utility fee collections are reduced, there will be lowered amounts of funding available. In a cash form to fund capital projects. The market building operating support level is level funded. There is sufficient operating funding to weather this period of financial uncertainty. However, we should be reminded that there is an agreement between the city and the Market Building Foundation. That should there be a requirement related to an operating deficit. The city has responsibility to support the needed deficit. On slide twenty-four. You see a visual of the fiscal twenty-one through fiscal twenty-five capital improvement program. As we discussed in months prior, the fifth year fiscal twenty twenty-five has been added totaling fourteen point three million dollars. Stationary projects such as RCPS, the Civic Center, stormwater improvements. Sidewalks, curb gutter and sidewalks, streetscape improvements and fleet capital replacements. As well as capital building maintenance moves forward as in other fiscal years. The items that are highlighted in yellow are additions or increases to the capital improvement program. And bring us forward to a total of twelve point nine million dollars for the five-year capital improvement program. For bond issuance. In each of those fiscal years, as we work through our debt service requirements. There could be excess debt service available for one-time capital needs. The undesignated fund balance and the stabilization reserve. With our most recent bond sale on April thirtieth, we continue to update those figures. And provide for the administration a projection as to what those excess debt service amounts may be in each of those fiscal years. Moving forward to slide twenty-five, just to indicate what our next steps are. We continue our revenue estimate updates, the month of April is in the process of being closed. We do anticipate that to occur towards the latter part of this week, early part of next week. And we will be updating our local tax estimates and also expenditure revisions as necessary based on feedback. From city council today, we anticipate bringing forward the recommended budget on May eighteenth. Followed by public hearings on May twenty-eighth, and those public hearings entail the real estate tax rate. The general fund budget as well as HUD and CDBG. Followed by budget study on June first and budget adoption on June fifteenth. At this point, we'll certainly pause for any comments from city manager or questions from city council.
Thank you, Amelia. If Bob, if Bob has some more questions, I'm gonna go in order, the reverse order as we did last time.
No, no further comments, we're just ready to answer questions that you might have as well.
All right, I'll start with Councilwoman Tish Whiteboard and we'll come right up to line. You're muted, who mutes? Okay.
Yes, there you go. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Ms. Amelia. That was certainly a lot for us to wrap our heads around. And I know that you have spent a lot of time making sure that we make the right decisions on where to cut, how to cut, how much to cut. I'm sure that took a lot. I really don't have any questions. I do have one comment. I noticed under expenditure reductions under consideration, the only thing that I would want to take a second look at is the reduction in TAP funding. Because I firmly believe that they may be able to help us aid in our recovery. And if we could, you know, avoid any cuts to TAP, that would be amazing. I would certainly think they would appreciate that. Because I know that they will be able to help facilitate us in our recovery efforts for sure. But thank you, and thank you to your staff as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Is that myself? I'm hearing myself echoing down there. All right, Ms. Osborne. Price, I'm sorry, Ms. Price.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, thank you. Yes, this is a lot to digest and it's extremely painful. I've got several, several things that are, are in that list of reductions being considered. And let me just start with the easier ones first. Could you explain what that means for two seasons? The pools being closed? Does that mean this current year and next year, I just wanted, I wasn't sure.
Yeah, for the pools, Ms. Price, it would mean that they would not open this year and they would not open next year. So when we say two seasons, because again, remember each time we open them, they actually span two budget years. Yeah.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to figure this much. And let me just go to the more meatier items. I, I've been very concerned, as all of us are, about. You know, so many people being sequestered at home and not having the kinds of blessings that so many of us have as far as still. Even though we're in isolation, we have opportunities to still be connected to family and friends. We just, we just have a lot of resources at our disposals. I'm also concerned about the TAP funding reduction being on, being considered. And I don't know what the dollar amount of that might be. But certainly as far as recovery and make sure that our crisis prevention agencies are able to. To help with those folks who are definitely, definitely have a lot more need than they even. Had in consideration from previous before this equestrian. I'm hearing and getting emails from folks who are concerned about uptick in domestic violence. I think about the children that are at home that do not have the security and protection of schools and. The kinds of folks that were able to buy wraparound services to protect our children and vulnerable populations. So I certainly hope that we can not have to go so deeply into. Reducing the kinds of agencies that are here to protect our most vulnerable. But thank you, I know this has been a painful process for you and your staff as well, Amelia. Can't thank you enough. Let's pray that it's not gonna be as dire as what's being presented just now. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Ms. Price. Ms. Osborne?
Thank you, Mary Lee, and thanks again for this tonight. This is, this is a lot of information for sure. Could you tell me just a little bit more about the non-departmental priority, the GRTC peak service reduction? And what that might look like?
I think I'll call Mr. Stobart.
The current Valley Metro Transit Development Plan recommended. Reducing a certain level of peak service based on low ridership. The plan as it currently exists would reallocate those peak hours to new service. Basically to new routes. So again, the reduction in peak was planned. And those hours were going to be reallocated to new service. In this case, based on the recommendation, the peak reduction would occur, but the two new routes would not. I would point out that for fiscal year twenty twenty-one. Based on CARES Act funding that Valley Metro has received. There would be no change in peak service during the next fiscal year because the CARES Act funding would preserve that for one year.
Thank you. And like my fellow councilwoman for me. I lamented all the cuts that would be happening for external agencies with arts and cultural funding. Even sister cities, human services funding, because we do contribute to a lot of agencies around our city. TAP funding, and I, you know, I don't know exactly what, what those reductions will look like and what kind of cuts we'll have to make. They certainly are, no agency is gonna be exempt from that, but I just wanted to add my voice to that as well. And I could probably ask you ten thousand more questions, but I think I'll stop now and hopefully some of the questions that I have my fellow council members were asked. For me. Thank you so much.
Thank you. We're gonna have another meeting before the, well, we may not, the eighteenth. All right, Ms. Davis.
Thank you. Amelia, just a couple of questions. I'll start with the big one, which is you mentioned on page nineteen. A one point seven million COVID nineteen contingency. And as I understand it, the contingency is going to be funded, that contingency fund will be funded through. The reduction in services and the cuts were mentioned in the previous slides. What happens if it doesn't get this bad? So if we go through and make all of these cuts and make all these reductions and there's one point seven million left over, which is great. How is it gonna be allocated as to who then receives that money? If it's not as bad as we think.
We would, we would then look, we'll have a plan for this. This is, I don't know what plan we're on, X or Y or one of those. But we will have a plan for restoring those dollars and it will restore in order with your priorities. So in other words, the things that we value and prioritize more as an organization and as a community that have been cut, those will be restored first. We'll also look at restoring those things that we've cut, really frankly, beyond what we feel comfortable doing. So I'll use street paving and alley maintenance as two examples. We have, you all know that when we survey our residents, probably the one item that we get every time we do that survey that there is displeasure with. It is the quality of the street conditions, particularly in our neighborhood streets, and we never funded the level that we should. And even though I know that there's concern, for example, talking about human services funding here. These include hundreds of thousands of dollars of reduction toward our paving. And so we would look at those, we would look at priorities and we would look at those things where perhaps we're not meeting the expectations of the community. And we had to cut deeply with this budget for that restoration. Ideally, we would also look at those same areas if we get funding from either the state or federal government. That would allow us to do that. That would be an example of not balancing our budget on it, but perhaps being able to fill some holes as we move forward.
And so, Mr. Cow, would you anticipate that the restoration of funds? That that prioritization or that that methodology is gonna be something that we vote on alongside the budget? Because I know it's not necessarily a part of the budget, but I would want for us to have a clear. Communication and idea of where money would be restored and what the order and the list would be when we're voting on the cuts at the same time.
Yeah, there's a couple of things that will happen. I mean, for one, the size of that contingency will likely differ from what it is. That's shown in this briefing right now, because again, what we've shown to you are the potential cuts that are under consideration. And we'll go back and refine those based off of information you're providing as well as further reviews by ourselves. So that dollar amount will change, that'll be number one. The second piece is, we would not likely have you vote on those items, but I think we certainly would indicate to you. At some, some level, what that restoration would look like. I don't think we would go through and identify kind of line item type things. I think we would talk about kind of broader categories that we would look to restore. As we, as we move through. And again, it'll be guided by the priorities in those areas that we have the larger gaps associated with those. No, no, go ahead.
Well, I was gonna bring up, I think the thing, so my colleagues on council have brought up TAP. And I will commend TAP for doing a really good job of reaching out to all of us to say, you know, this is gonna be critical. One of the things that TAP really, really, I guess, echoed or reinforced with us is the fact that. The money that TAP receives from the city then goes on to guarantee as a form of a match. Of a grant match, hundreds of thousands of more dollars that come in. And so I think that it is really important for council members as we are looking through all of these expenditure reductions. For us to be really cognizant of where money beyond just what we see on that list is going to be lost. In addition to the cuts that are being made on the list, because there are a lot of areas. And I, you know, I speak to it best from the human services agency's perspective. Because a lot of the people that get funded through that grant process are using the funds as matching funds. To provide additional service. And so, you know, it may be a fifteen thousand dollar cut in our budget, but it could look like. A two hundred and fifty thousand dollar cut to the, to the greater community. And so I think those are things that we have to be really, really careful of. And not saying, Bob, that you and Amelia haven't been really careful of that, but there may be areas that we can help provide some additional guidance. And just making sure we're not, you know, cutting off our nose despite our face by making these smaller reductions. And then really delaying the length of recovery in our area because we are also preventing additional money from potentially coming in further down the road.
Yeah, and I guess, you know, just for, just to add a little bit of sort of numbers with some of the questions you are asking, just so you have some context with this. So as it stands right now, the information that we've started to put together, the cut, it's under consideration with TAP. Would be thirty-two thousand dollars out of their hundred and sixty thousand dollars that we have provided to them in the past. There are also cuts considered as there are in the arts commission, but again, basically across all internally as well as externally. The Human Services Advisory Board would be looking right now at about eighty-six thousand dollars less spread out among all those agencies. So when you combine those two, you're over a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars, which again, I just remarked that that hundred and fifteen thousand will have to come from somewhere. If it does not come from those agencies. And so just understand that if the desire ultimately is that we hold those level funded. Then that's a hundred and fifteen thousand that's gonna come either from other external agencies or somewhere, somewhere else within. So just, but I wanted to make sure you knew the numbers that we're kind of contemplating with those at this point.
Well, and if Annette at TAP is watching right now, I just want to point out that I made mention in our last conversation that we would have to find the money. like I said, just as council where we can really guide administration on any areas in particular where multipliers of the money that we supply are going to be lost in addition to, because I wouldn't expect you all to know all of that, Bob. One of the things that I think really struck me outside of that funding that's being cut is the code enforcement staff reduction. You mentioned that alleys are one of the biggest complaints. I would say possibly the second biggest complaint is in code enforcement, which we all know has a lot, it's not just because people, you know, people are doing their jobs and doing them well, there's a lot of other issues when it comes to code enforcement. But the thought of, again, if we were to start cutting code enforcement and then seeing more and more properties becoming derelict, you know, obviously causing some additional issues within neighborhoods and, you know, long-term devaluing property in certain neighborhoods, that is a really big concern. To go back to what I said two weeks ago, the tail on this, trying to shorten the tail as much as we can, I would be really concerned about reducing code enforcement.
Yeah, and the reductions that are being, yeah, the reductions that are being considered would, what they would ultimately do is enlarge the area, basically that each of the inspectors has responsibility, the officers has responsibility for. And as you stated, I mean, what that, what the result of that would be is likely more emphasis on reaction versus proaction, obviously, as well as most likely greater lengths of time for us to be able to take the action that's necessary for us to take. As you mentioned, there are obviously requirements that we have to follow anyway in terms of amount of notice we provide folks, those kinds of things, that wouldn't change. But the time in between, we would typically manage, likely would go up, because again, there are fewer, there would be more area covered by each individual officer.
And were those, you said specifically in that section that there was going to be, that there was potential for staff reduction. And on a different slide, I think we showed that there were 20 positions, 17 of which are currently unfilled, three of which are currently filled. Would that be one of the currently filled positions?
That one would be unfilled, correct? So it's one of the.
Both of the code enforcement positions are currently vacant based on hiring.
Yeah, both of those, Brian was just saying, on the current hiring freeze, both of those are vacant right now.
Okay, and so what you're saying really is that our code enforcement department currently is already acting in this bigger footprint, in these bigger areas already, because we don't have places that aren't being enforced right now.
And there's always a certain amount of that anyway with turnover that goes on, but yes, that's currently what's happening.
That is a stressful job, being in the code enforcement department. All right, as Juna said, I have a million other questions. Those were the ones that were kind of top of mind, so I will seat the floor at this point and allow some other folks to ask questions, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. Vice Mayor Cobb.
Thank you. Great questions. Councilwoman Davis, you asked one of my biggies, so thanks for letting me check that off. Bob and Amelia, do I understand this correctly, that part of our examination of fiscal year 21 and even looking forward is a balance between looking at the supplemental expenditures under consideration, which are, include new services and existing services, as well as the expenditure reductions under consideration? Am I correct in that?
Right, so remember, we're trying to do really kind of three things as we go through the budget. One of those is, in this case, to adapt to the anticipated loss of revenue year over year. So that's one, that's part of what's driving the need for expenditure reductions. The second piece is, there are some expenditures that are simply unavoidable. So I'll use as an example, the increase in healthcare for the jail. We really can't avoid that expense, it's an increase year over year. And then the third category with that are, there are items that are either new initiatives or new purchases that we feel fall within those priority areas I talked about as well. So we've got to make space through expenditure reductions for those three categories in order to actually balance the budget as we go forward. With some of those, we're able to fund under one-time only scenarios, so I use the gun violence task force recommendations. So we've got some funding identified for that out of a one-time source, but there are others that we know will be a recurring expense associated with the supplementals. I will say that even going into the budget development before COVID came, we had greatly diminished what we were able to do with those supplemental expenditures, just because even as well as our revenues were performing, in that case, in order to free space for a pay increase for the employees, we really had very little that we could actually spend on new initiatives or new programs. So all of that has obviously been eliminated. So the list that you see for those items is, I would say significantly less than what the departments and others have identified as their needs. And there just isn't the funding there, even in a good year, there wasn't much funding there for, and certainly there is not now. So we're really trying to get down to just the absolute required items.
Well, I think one of the things that we have all realized during this time is how much we miss those things that we often take for granted, what things we would identify as essential, and those priorities have become pretty clear to us, but those things that contribute to our economy and our livability and all of the strategic areas. When I look here at, for example, one example out of education and livability, eliminate weekday evening hours at main library, eliminate one full day of operation at neighborhood branch libraries and neighborhood services reduction. The library things are pretty clear in terms of reducing time there. My concern, and I place this within the broader consideration that we're looking at, is that these places are community hubs, they're community centers. And we realize that if anything, these kinds of services going forward, to the extent that we can, we're probably going to place even greater value in, because they do provide services that we're missing during this time, or to be creative in how we provide those services. What, under neighborhood services reduction, Bob, what, can you give us an idea of what that is about?
Yeah, it varies. Some of it has to do with staff support that is provided for the group. We were also originally contemplating adding some additional funds for the neighborhood grant program. We are now actually looking at reducing the grant funding that's made available for the neighborhoods. We need to revisit the harvesting of the fruits. I mean, there are a number of things in there. Amelia had alluded to the fact that those have not yet been kind of finalized. That's one of the areas we're still trying to figure out, the best way to approach that. None of those dollars are that significant individually, but they are significant enough that we're looking at making those adjustments while still maintaining the kind of core portion of the neighborhood, the neighborhood support side of things. But that's some of the areas we've looked at.
And then I know that in the overall look of our budget, external agencies funding is not the highest in terms of what we fund, but it's a significant part of our economy and our livability, education, I mean, every priority is touched through these external agencies. And so I hope that as we are looking at these funding reductions, that we keep in mind the impact of these services to our economy, to our education, to our livability, all those priorities, as well as the implications that if some of this funding is cut, and this gets to Councilwoman Davis's question earlier, just citing TAP as an example, but it's implied here with any of the nonprofits that may receive funding from the city. Sometimes the funding they receive from us is leveraged along with other localities to secure additional funding, to operate programs that help sustain livelihood in the community. So I know that that has been part of the examination of this, but I would really encourage us to keep that in mind. And I think the other question in all of this that I believe that agencies will be asking is, if we are in a position, not if, but because we're in a position of considering reductions and shifting in funding, what does restoration of that funding look like? So for example, I think Michelle raised this question, if we get some relief funding, if localities do actually get relief funding through COVID-19, would we be able to utilize that? I know it would depend on the guidelines, but would we potentially be able to utilize that to restore reduction that we might have to take? That's part of it. But then the bigger picture is, what are our plans for restoring? Because for many, for many agencies, they function on such a shoestring budget anyway. We may not think that $32,000 is a lot, but to them, it could be the make or break of a program that they offer that may be unique in the city. So what are, I'm just inviting us to think about, what does that restoration look like? Does it come back to current levels? Is it a gradual thing? And Bob, I know part of what you'll probably answer is, we've been on that gradual restoration for the last 12 years, since 2008, and in many ways, we're just achieving some of those levels that we had to reduce from in 2008. So I know it's a mixed bag of things. So I guess I'm just pitching some philosophical things for us to consider as we look at this that have to do with impact implications, how that's leveraged and restoration.
Yeah, and I guess we'd answer a couple of things. We spend, we provide about $10 million out of our budget to external agencies. What we're looking at right now is about $2 million, $2.5 million worth of reductions to our internal organization and about a million to a million and a half to our external agencies. So that's part of the balancing act. There are some dollars that are already available that we will be using to plug some of those gaps through the money that we've received through the CDVG funds. However, those CDVG funds that we've received are pretty limited in what they can be used for. They have to be used tied to the impacts of the coronavirus. And so, for example, we are more likely to put money into the CDVG funds to address, for example, small businesses and their recovery than we're able to do on some of the social service agencies, because unless they're providing service that directly benefits, and we will be doing some of that as well, there'll be some additional funding that will be coming forward for these same agencies that we're talking about to compete for some additional CDVG monies that we might not otherwise have had in the past. So that was part of the strategy here as well, is that unlike us, the social service agencies or the human services agencies that we're talking about possibly having to reduce, there is actually a source of funds that they may be able to actually compete for in order to secure those financial funds. We don't necessarily have that ability to do things like streets or what have you on those other items. So as far as restoration, I mean, I think you talked about, you touched on it, we still haven't restored funding from the last recession. There are cuts that were incurred by the police department, by the parks department, by recreation, which have never been restored and frankly, probably never will in light of what's going on right now. I would expect it to be no different with whatever expenditure reductions occur as a result of this budget is, the answer to that is completely dependent upon economic recovery and how long that it takes and what it looks like. If you remember, one of the things we're looking at is, we have to look ahead to FY22. If we really do see a falloff in real estate values, we will see a substantial decrease in revenues coming to us in FY22, which actually will probably go the opposite direction, requires to make even more reductions versus looking at starting to restore those funds. However, if the funding does come back greater than what is expected, then that just becomes part of the annual budgeting process. We would look to see, again, we're at $2, $2.5 million worth of reductions inside the organization, we would look to restore that in priority order. We would look to try to do things differently. There are some things frankly that are going to be reduced that we would probably put forward, the idea of never restoring them. It just depends on what they are. We may be doing some things differently than what we've done in the past inside the organization, and I would expect that, we would expect that to be of our partner agencies as well, that they would likewise be seeking other ways to do it rather than dependency upon the city being open by the funding in exactly the same way we've been able to do so in the past. And again, all of that could change if additional dollars come from outside that have less strings attached to it. I just don't think any of us, the external agencies or us, should necessarily count on that being the likelihood. It may be, but there's too much uncertainty associated with that.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right, Councilman Bestbitch.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. City Manager and Ms. Finance Director for all you've done. I would love to be able to avoid a lot of repetition, but I do feel like I need to say some things about points that have already been raised by other members of council where I might have a little bit of different perspective or maybe some additional information that I would like to put into the mix. But let me start by sort of going to the bottom line and then coming back to some of the specifics. If we make all the reductions that are being under consideration at this time, then we end up with $1.7 million plus that we can set aside as a COVID-19 contingency. And we know that that is not a magic number. That might be the right number, it might be more than we need in a contingency, it might not be enough. And as we've discussed from a number of points here, that we don't know what kind of assistance may come our way from the state and federal governments that would help to deal with some of that. So I just want us to sort of keep that in a proper perspective. Then to get to some of the more specific things, I would really like to know more detail about what we mean when we say eliminating evening hours at the main library. What kind of a schedule are we anticipating? And I don't necessarily expect you to answer that question right now, but by the time we get the budget study, it seems to me that eliminating the evening hours some days of the week is a better approach than just saying, well, the main library is never going to be open in the evenings anymore, or after 5 o'clock it's closed, or 6 o'clock, or whatever time. Because as Vice Mayor Cobb has pointed out, we do have people in our community who really depend on the library for a lot of social supports, ability to access the internet and so forth. So, you know, I understand the overall goal and the need, and in terms of all of the libraries, the neighborhood branches, I think we need to get a better picture of what are we talking about? And if we're going to eliminate some evening hours, does it make sense to look at the possibility of opening later in the day on certain days in order to be able to extend service into the evenings so that we end up with the same number of hours, whatever number of hours you have in mind at this point for library service? But we're not just saying it's all this or it's all that, and sort of staggering around the city, different branches, reducing hours of being closed on different days and that sort of thing. So the library is available somewhere and may not be as convenient for a lot of folks, but at least the library services are there every day of the week, except of course Sunday when they're all closed anyway. Then the second area, again, it's already been pointed out, some of the concerns about reductions in code enforcement, what I'm hearing is, if we don't have as many folks, then that just means each person gets a little bigger area to cover within the city, which of course always means that we're asking people to do more with less. And kind of along with the concern about code enforcement, the other thing I noticed was the reduction in fire inspections. And I'd really like to get more detail on what sort of impact we think that will have in the community, because if we're not doing enough fire inspections and we're putting more properties at risk, we're not maintaining the public safety level that we need, then that can have some repercussions that we would not want to see as well. I was very surprised on slide number 18 to see the funding for the Sister Cities organization included under arts and cultural funding. The funding for Sister Cities is part of the budget that we identify as dues and membership fees or some title to that effect that also includes things like the Union Municipal League. or some title to that effect that also includes things like the Virginia Municipal League and the Regional Commission, where we're essentially given a per capita assessment. If we want to continue to be part of the commission, if we want to be, continue to be a part of the BML, then this is what's due. This is what we have to pay. Sister Cities doesn't work exactly like that, but we included it in that category of funding to make it more clear that this is a commitment we're making to the Sister Cities that we have a connection with. And let me, just by way of context, you know, the Roanoke Valley has seven Sister Cities. One of those Sister Cities, a sister city in Opole, Poland, is through an agreement with Roanoke County. The other six are agreements with the city of Roanoke that have been developed at various times over quite a number of years now. And what has been provided in recent years has been $1,800, which is essentially $1,800 per each of the six Sister Cities that the city has an agreement with. Frankly, as you know, Mr. Cow, because we've talked about this at the beginning of the year, I was hopeful that we could sort of increase that to $2,000 per city, which would have been a grand total of only $1,200 in additional funding within the context of a $300 million budget. I see now that that's not advisable or appropriate. But I just don't want to see all of a sudden we kick Sister Cities out of dues and membership lines within the budget and put it under arts and cultural funding, because that's not what we've been doing. Again, a number of people have talked about TAP. A lot of the human services funding that we provide, different agencies use to leverage grants and provide matching funds, that means they get more. I'm not sure that anybody does a better job of that than TAP does. And I think that generally, whatever dollar we give them, they get $4 by using that for matching funds. So if we're talking about a $32,000 reduction in their, in funding from us, that could equate to $128,000 reduction for TAP's overall budget. So I really would want to be careful about that as well. And then the last thing I'll say is that in terms of the fee compendium adjustments, I do think it's very wise for us to look at gradual increases in those numbers on a more regular basis rather than waiting several years and then taking a big jump and making a large increase in those fees in any given year. So I'm glad to see that that's part of the equation here, part of the consideration, recognizing as I said, that we're not talking about a huge amount of money in any event. But it shouldn't, it should never get to the point where it needs to be a huge amount of money. It should be gradual increases over time. So those are just my thoughts that I wanted to share. I'm not sure if you want to respond to any of that at this point or get back with us later. But I think that's all you're doing.
Yeah, I'll just offer up a few thoughts initially on maybe three of those. On the library hours, you know, whatever arrangement ultimately is that we arrive at that makes sense in terms of the services that provide, you know, we're open and flexible with that. However, it has to be something that ultimately results in savings. And so I'll use an example that, you know, we were, as we discussed this option, closing, for example, a branch on a particular day on a rotating schedule does not lend the same savings as if all libraries are closed except for the main on, say, a Tuesday or a Monday or what have you. Because it allows us to actually reduce frankly, the personnel. It's not just about the light bill being less or what have you. There's actually part-time employees that we would actually reduce that number in order to be able to do that. So that's, that's one thought. I realize that could be accomplished, as you said, by perhaps starting later in the day so that you still are reducing the total amount of hours. So we're certainly open to different options. It just has to yield those kinds of savings. On the fire inspection, those actually are not being done right now. That was part of what we had to reduce for the FY20 response to make up for the reduction in revenues that we had currently. Those are for low-risk inspections and they're actually conducted by retired firefighters that actually do those inspections for us. So all of our high-risk kinds of inspections are still going on and would still continue to be going on as we, as we look at those. So the things I think everybody expects to be inspected would still be done in that fashion. On the Sister Cities thing, the only thing I'll say, the only reason it was placed in that category is because there's others that you mentioned too, are contractual obligations that we have. We actually have a contractual obligation with, for example, the commission as well as the regional partnership and so on, that's based off of that per capita. And so it had to go into another category. It's obviously a cultural kind of offering with it and stuff as well. And I can't remember, I think the reduction that is being considered, I'm sorry, I'm looking, see if I can find what it was. About $3,000. So it's about a $3,000 reduction is what it is. We tried to apply kind of a percentage on a number of these, just so again, because I'll pause here and say that though I know each of you have likely been contacted by TAP, based on the phone conversation I had earlier today, you will be contacted by the cultural endowment, you will be contacted by COLAB, you will be contacted by, go through the list. Just understand that right now, you're only hearing from one of those folks, all of the folks, obviously. The one group you probably won't be contacted from, unfortunately, are the folks that are inside our organization that also are enduring these cuts. So I just push that out there and I know you know that. It's just as we get closer to the budget development, just keep that in mind that we've got some room we've built in there to try to build that contingency. And there are a few things that we can pull off of that contingency. But fairly quickly, these dollar amounts that we're talking about start adding up and you'll start seeing that contingency decrease. And the worst scenario is actually the scenario where we're four months, six months into FY21 and things are not going as we had hoped that they would. And we suddenly have to find reductions mid-year. Those will be a lot harder to do than identifying upfront what's going to go into the budget. So again, I know you know that, but I think it's worth repeating. I have, I have informed probably no less than half a dozen folks that had larger reductions that this presentation was going to occur today. And I told them what those reductions were. I didn't want them to be surprised by that. And so I'm not surprised, obviously, that you're starting to get contacted. But I again, believe it's probably only the beginning of those contacts as you work your way through this process. And again, we, you know, we certainly, I certainly need what you're providing me, which is that, you know, those insights and that kind of information. But, you know, I'll provide to you the budget that I think gets us where we need to in light of those comments as we move forward. But I still think probably you'll face, even at that point on the 18th and then on the 28th in the public hearing, you're going to face, feel some opposition of what's proposed in the budget and probably still some tough choices that lie ahead as you proceed forward with it.
All right. Thank you. Let me just close this session by saying that all of the programs that we've talked about are important and sure, we're going to get calls from culture endowment, the, some neighborhoods and all those things. We talked about it importantly, it's going to affect people and it's a concern to us. But I'm going to make just a comment, not, not ask any questions, but just a comment that has been said before, TAP is very important to this city for a number of reasons. They have a matching grant that, as Councilman Best Pitch said, that that they need the support from the city. And I would ask, and I think a good majority of this council, Bob, would ask that we take a long, hard look at that, at what TAP's doing, because they are, we talk about dealing with the vulnerable people in our community. TAP does that. TAP has those folks, they do that on a routine basis. And what we're going through, it's going to be tough to do a lot. But they employ a number of people that, in our community, that are right above that line, that they need to keep going. And so I would ask that we do all that we can to help this or that organization out along with the rest of things. But I would place TAP as a priority. It's been a priority for me. And I hope that we would take a long, hard look and see what we can do to get him as close as that to that $160,000 that they requested, to do what we can to get there. So that's, that's pretty much. And again, it's a tough process. And everything that we've mentioned is going to be, you know, is people going to call. Believe it or not, once the word gets out that the pool's going to be closed for two years, some of us are going to get calls on that. I have to talk about that for a little bit. But that's a part of the process. That's part of the process that we're going through. So this is going to be a tough call. So those are my thoughts. You, Bob, Amelia and the staff know you're going to give it your best effort. And so that's, I think what you've heard is the feeling of council. And I said, the most consistent thing you heard is TAP. That's a consistent thing. And I listen to everybody at this point. We hear it down and what we want to do. So again, I know what that organization does. I've chaired the board there for years. So let's do what the best that we can and we'll see what happens. All right, with that being said.
Yeah, and I appreciate the input and the help as we formulate this. Just as a reminder again, as Amelia mentioned, so on May 18, we will be presenting the proposed budget. Certainly, I welcome the opportunity to meet with each of you individually prior to that as well as certainly after that. One advantage, I guess, we have in light of the timing, because of us moving the budget process back, is there is the 10 days between the budget presentation and the public hearing. And so we will also be facilitating some way in which to receive, because we know we'll probably still be doing some kind of virtual meeting or a partial virtual. But we'll be taking steps necessary, or taking some extra steps to try to take in some additional public comment regarding what is the proposed budget on the 18th. So we have a little bit more time associated with that. We have less time on the other end after the public hearing before we have to move very quickly into adoption of the budget since we pushed it right up against what the deadlines are associated with that. But I appreciate the comments. Certainly appreciate the work that Amelia and her staff have done to get us to this point. And I know there's still a lot more work to get us to that proposal on the 18th. So look forward to talking with you further about it. So thank you.
Thank you. All right. We're going to go now to items that are recommended for action. Beginning with item number one, first item is the acceptance of the Virginia Department of Emergency Management Heavy Technical Resource Rescue Grant. There are two measures as a resolution. Can I get a motion?
June Osborne moved the resolution.
Michelle Davis, second.
All right, Madam Clerk, could you read the title of the paragraph?
A resolution accepting the FY19 State Homeland Security Program grant to the city from the Virginia Department of Emergency Management and authorizing execution of any required documentation on behalf of the city.
Questions or comments by members of council? Hurry now, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Whiteboy.
Aye.
Ms. Best Pitch.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb.
Aye.
Ms. Davis.
Aye.
Ms. Osborne.
Aye.
Ms. Price.
Aye.
And Mayor Lee.
Aye. And the vote is unanimous and this resolution passes. Thank you. We do have a budget ordinance.
So Best Pitcher moved the budget ordinance?
Ms. Whiteboy, a second.
Madam Clerk, can you read the title of the paragraph?
An ordinance appropriating funding from the U.S. Department of Homeland Security through the Commonwealth of Virginia Department of Emergency Management for heavy technical rescue team for equipment and training and development, amending and re-ordaining certain sections of the 2019, 2020 grant fund appropriations and dispensing with the second reading by title of this ordinance.
Thank you. Any questions or comments by members of council? Hurry now, I'll ask, please call the roll.
Ms. Whiteboy.
Aye.
Ms. Best Pitch.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb.
Aye.
Ms. Davis.
Aye.
Ms. Osborne.
Aye.
Ms. Price.
Aye.
And Mayor Lee.
Aye. And the budget ordinance passes. Thank you. Appropriation of federal asset forfeiture funds for use by the Roanoke City Police Department. There's a budget ordinance.
Ms. Whiteboy. Move the budget ordinance. Ms. Whiteboy, second.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, can you read the paragraph?
An ordinance to appropriate funding from the Department of Justice Federal Asset Sharing Program and the Department of Treasury Federal Asset Sharing Program for enhancing law enforcement operations, amending and re-ordaining certain sections of the 2019 through 2020 grant fund appropriations and dispensing with the second reading by title of this ordinance.
Thank you. Any questions or comments by members of council? Hurry now, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Whiteboy.
Aye.
Ms. Best Pitch.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb.
Aye.
Ms. Davis.
Aye.
Ms. Osborne.
Aye.
Ms. Price.
Aye.
Mayor Lee.
Aye. And the budget ordinance passes. All right. Item number three is the appropriation of state asset forfeiture funds for use by the Roanoke Police Department. There's a budget ordinance.
Move the, Ms. Whiteboy, move the budget ordinance.
All right.
June Osborne, second.
All right, Madam Clerk, please read the title of the paragraph.
An ordinance to appropriate funding from the State Asset Sharing Program for enhancing law enforcement operations, amending and re-ordaining certain sections of the 2019, 2020 grant fund appropriations and dispensing with the second reading by title of this ordinance.
All right, thank you. Any questions or comments by members of council? Hurry now, Madam, please call the roll.
Ms. Whiteboy.
Aye.
Ms. Best Pitch.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb.
Aye.
Ms. Davis.
Aye.
Ms. Osborne.
Aye.
Ms. Price.
Aye.
And Mayor Lee.
Aye. And the budget ordinance passes. Thank you. All right, we're now, we received comments from our city manager, Mr. Bob Cowan.
Mayor, the only items I'll remind folks is that this Wednesday, of course, we'll have our next weekly press conference at 3 o'clock with yourself and the vice mayor. And still encourage folks to visit the city's various websites. There are quite a few items, or quite a few engagement opportunities that are beginning to get posted on there. All virtual engagement, but still opportunities for folks to continue to find other things to do as we continue to progress forward. And then the last item, I'll say, since the governor at 2 o'clock during this meeting started giving some guidance as to the timing of the reopening of various activities possibly in the next couple of weeks, we will, of course, continue to advance on those conversations here as well and keep you, as well as the community, apprised of what our next steps might be. And again, that'll be mostly for the community, that'll be mostly done through our social media information as well as media releases. And again, at
And again, at the press conference on Wednesday as well. Those are the items I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh item number eight is reports of committees. We have none. And number nine is unfinished business. We have none. Item number ten, ten A, is ordinance to ratify and approve extension of the suspension of fares for transit services provided by Greater Roanoke Transit Company, uh which is also called Valley Metro. There is an ordinance.
Anita Price, move the ordinance.
All right, second.
Miss White Boyd, second.
All right, Madam Clerk, could you read the title of the paragraph?
An ordinance ratifying and approving the suspension of fares for transit services provided by Greater Roanoke Transit Company doing business as Valley Metro, authorizing the city manager to take certain actions, and dispensing with the second reading of this ordinance by title.
Thank you. Comments by members?
Mr. Mayor, uh Dan Callahan, Roanoke City Attorney. Um as Mr. Kyle mentioned just a few minutes ago, the governor made some uh announcement today at two o'clock. One of the announcements he made was to extend uh the closure of nonessential businesses from May eight to May fifteen. And therefore, um it's appropriate that uh someone move and second an amendment to the measure before you. The amendment would change the dates that appear in the last recital on page one and the dates in paragraphs numbered one and two on page two from May eight, twenty twenty to May fifteen, twenty twenty.
Mr. Mayor, I have moved to amend the ordinance to change the date from May eight to May fifteen in both places in this ordinance.
Second. Second.
All right.
Davis.
Roll call. Second. Thank you, Ms. Davis. Uh roll call. Madam Clerk, would you please call the
Miss White Boyd.
On the amendment.
Aye.
Mr. Best Pitch.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb.
Aye.
Ms. Davis.
Aye.
Ms. Osborne.
Aye.
Ms. Price.
Aye.
Mayor Lee.
Aye. And the amendment passes.
Mr. Mayor, would be in order now for someone to move uh the ordinance as amended.
Anita Price, I've moved the ordinance as amended.
June Osborne, second.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Uh. Madam Clerk, can you uh read the title of the paragraph?
Yeah, read the title, same paragraph.
Okay. An ordinance ratifying and approving the suspension of fares for transit services provided by Greater Roanoke Transit Company doing business as Valley Metro, authorizing the city manager to take certain actions, and dispensing with the second reading of this ordinance by title.
As noted earlier, Mr. Mayor, the um the ordinance uh changes the date of May eight to May fifteen in three places.
Great. Thank you. Uh let me just make a comment. I want to thank the staff and folks at the Valley Metro uh for what they've done. And especially, sometimes we may forget that they also have some uh for their some first line responders, uh the bus drivers and those people that get on bus to to clean the bus up and those kinds of things. So thank them for their adjusting, not only the fares, but also adjusting uh to make sure that uh we have the social distancing and uh the number of people on there. They've had to go through some adjustments. And and again, they are frontline people. So uh thank them and for their work and commitment. All right, anybody else have any comments they wanna make on that? If not, I'll ask Clerk to call the roll.
Miss White Boyd.
Aye.
Mr. Best Pitch.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb.
Aye.
Ms. Davis.
Aye.
Ms. Osborne.
Aye.
Ms. Price.
Aye.
And Mayor Lee.
Aye. And the vote is unanimous and the ordinance passes. Thank you. All right. Item number eleven, motion of miscellaneous businesses. Uh let me go down the line and each member, and I'll come back to uh Vice Mayor because I think he has a motion, but I want to uh recognize uh Councilman Best Pitch for any any miscellaneous idea, motions or things that he wants to make.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, but I have nothing further at this time.
All right, uh Ms. Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um I do want to take this time to finally tell everybody about the project I was so excited about last time we met, which is called Take Out Hunger. And uh if you wanna see our community really coming together in an impressive way, um go to the Take Out Hunger um page on the Community Foundation's website. Take Out Hunger is a seven-week initiative that combines the efforts of about ten nonprofits um and probably twenty or so small businesses. We are currently raising money um through the Community Foundation serving Western Virginia. They have been gracious enough to host this project. And uh our goal is over a hundred thousand dollars in seven weeks, um because with that money, we're able to feed two thousand meals a week um to our families that are currently in need um and who are experiencing hunger. And um we're purchasing all of the food from local restaurants to feed those families. So the majority of the um the majority of the nonprofits that are involved all already have feeding programs up and running. And most of us are doing that through Feeding Southwest Virginia, for which we are extremely grateful. Um but this effort takes it a step further. Um and it supplements what Feeding Southwest Virginia is already doing, the great work they're already doing in our community, um by purchasing additional food from local restaurants. So we are supporting local restaurants and our local economy while getting hearty, healthy, warm meals in the hands of families once a week. Um the joy on people's faces on Friday when we were able to deliver was just incredible. Um so thank you to everybody here um and to everybody within our community. The support has just been tremendous. Um I get asked the question a lot, um you know, kind of who's responsible for this and how is this all working? And I can genuinely say it is a leaderless revolution. We have lots of nonprofits that are just working really hard. And the nonprofits themselves aren't receiving any money. There is no administrative fee, no overhead taken, um nothing for our individual nonprofits. One hundred percent of the funds being raised is purchasing food. And um we're just so lucky to live in a community that has really banded together this way um to support something that is taking a lot of work and a lot of effort, but that is doing a whole lot of good at the same time. So thank you. Um I'm glad I can finally announce it. And uh the easiest place, if you want more information, is to look at the Community Foundation's website. And uh that's where you can get all the information. WDBJ seven has been running um a lot of spots and ads and helping to highlight the nonprofits that are participating, which has been great as well. So just like I said, huge community effort, and I'm really proud of the work that everybody is doing. So thank you.
Beautiful.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. Great work. Great job. Did you say a hu-
Merrily, you cut out. Did I say what? Hundred thousand, yes, sir.
One hundred thou-
That's our goal, yes, sir. And we've actually. Oh, Merrily, I'm sorry, you're cutting out. I can't hear you.
Okay, I just said I want you on my campaign committee.
Yeah, thank you. Well, I'll tell you, in the first week, we raised almost thirty thousand dollars.
Excellent.
That's great. All right, anybody, uh let me go right down the line. Uh Ms. Osborne.
Thank you, Mayor Lee. Um uh so many things. Uh so last week, you had mentioned that you wanted to highlight some of the nonprofits who were doing great work. And I think Michelle just did that. That was um one of the um really exceptional collaborations that is happening in our community right now. And so um there are so many other uh agencies and nonprofits that are working really hard and really coming together. Um so uh since since that one was so outstanding, what I thought I might take a minute to suggest is that there are still organizations that do need help from members of the community. Um and the Council of Community Services is sort of the the hub of collecting donations for masks and disseminating volunteers in the community. So I just wanted to highlight that agency. I think Vice Mayor Cobb um addressed that somewhat in the in a previous um uh press conference. Uh but so they they still do need handmade masks. Um and they asked that they be delivered to the Campbell Avenue location, uh one per baggie. And if you go to their website, there are some um more instructions about that, including a pattern to make a mask. Um some of the other organizations that are asking for donations such as um diapers, wipes, baby food, um cleaning supplies, um hand sanitizer, toilet paper, those those hot commodity items. Um those are still in need, as well as shelf-stable food. Some of the organizations that are um Arch, Friendship House, um Kids Sore, Community Youth Programs, Ram House. So there is still community need and opportunity for people who really want to help um to get engaged. Um I also wanted to just make um uh one note of mention um regarding the uh death of Dr. Patrick Shaw Cable, who was the museum curator for the Taubman. Um I just wanted to um um offer condolences to his family and to the community. I had been to an exhibit um not long before um COVID nineteen hit and had the opportunity to interact with him. So it was very surprising to me um that he's no longer here. So I just wanted to make mention of that. Um and then one last thing, uh this is an excellent time to sit down in front of your computer and fill out the census. Um it is incredibly important, and it is our legal obligation to fill it out. And it is how we get our voice heard in the um in the most broad way. Um so if you've not filled out your census yet, and there's a significant number of our community that has not, as well as nationwide, please do take the time to do it. I've not done it yet, but I'm going to. Um it's very important. It's how we get counted, and it's how we get access to the services and funding for services that we that we really need. So thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, Councilwoman Price.
I have nothing to add to all that wonderful information that has been given. And uh thank you, ladies, for having some very significant work that has benefited so many folks here in uh in the city and Roanoke Valley. So thank you very much for both of you uh giving that information.
Thank you. All right. Uh and I do want to recognize Councilwoman Trish White Boyd and for winning the Democratic nomination for city council on last past Saturday. Uh congratulations, Ms.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate it. Um I just want to say, first of all, um I really miss seeing all of my um colleagues. I don't think I've seen anybody, but Ms. Price, that was because we um went to an event last week, but I haven't seen anybody else. So I really miss seeing you guys in person. Um the only other thing um I wanted to say is that you all um are doing your weekly briefings, which have been really helpful to the residents. And I appreciate, you know, you and Vice Mayor Cobb. And also, these briefings are now going to be aired on Channel Three on Thursdays, but I couldn't remember the time. If someone could uh make sure that the rest of the residents are made aware of that, because there are a lot of people interested in hearing what you all have to say and weren't able to get you on social media. So I appreciate you moving that to um live TV.
And Trish, it said it will it rebroadcast at four o'clock.
On Thursdays?
Yes, and Fridays, Thursdays and Fridays. And I also believe it's being broadcast on the radio as well. Yeah, there's a new, the radio station in the mountain is also broadcasting it live as well um on the radio. And we're trying to find out what the call numbers are of that.
Well, I appreciate that. I had a lot of elderly people um asking for updates and um wanting information on the briefing. And so everybody is not on social media. So I appreciate the city manager and everybody coordinating that with RBTV to get that replay. And the only other comment I wanted to make is that I have gotten um a lot of people saying that we had taken some extreme measures here in the city, uh closing the greenway, closing the parks, et cetera, et cetera. But I just want to say, I think that the reason we don't have the 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 large numbers here in Roanoke City um is because of our extreme measures. And I would just say, you know, just bear with us. I think um it's working. Um I think it has helped to mitigate the spread. And if you do go out to wear your mask or some type of covering, and if you can stay home, stay at home, we're not totally out of the woods yet. So I just didn't want people to get uh some misconceptions about the low numbers that we have here in Roanoke City. And um I attribute it to our our willingness to comply, stay at home, wear a mask, and and do what we're told to do. So I just say, hang in there and be patient. Thank you.
And Trish, the radio station is one oh one point five um that it's broadcast on.
Live during on Wednesday's broadcast?
Yes, it's, yes, they broadcast live. Thank you.
I mean, did you have your hand up?
No, sir. There was sun coming in the window that's sitting to my left, and I was trying to adjust it.
Uh now go to uh Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd I'd like to make a motion. Uh I'd like to move that Roanoke City Council meet in a closed meeting by electronic communication means for the purpose of considering and discussing appointments of Roanoke City School Board, Board of Trustees pursuant to Virginia Code Section two point two. Sorry about that. No, um sorry, I got interrupted. Uh let me just restate it again. I move that Roanoke City Council meet in a closed meeting by electronic communication means for the purpose of considering and discussing appointments of Roanoke City School Board Trustees pursuant to Virginia Code Section two point two dash thirty-seven eleven A one.
Miss White Boyd, a second.
Can you call the roll?
Yes, Miss White Boyd.
Aye.
Mr. Best Pitch.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb.
Aye.
Ms. Davis.
Aye.
Ms. Osborne.
Aye.
Ms. Price.
Aye.
And Mayor Lee.
Aye. Yeah, as I was having, and we will uh recess here from our and go into a closed session, which will be uh through telephone access, and uh we'll come back afterwards. So we'll take a recess now and come back and go into the closed session.
We're ready. Vice Mayor Cobb.
Welcome back to the recessed two o'clock session of city council on May fourth. At this time, I'd like to call on Councilman Best Pitch to provide a certification of closed meeting motion.
Mr. Vice Mayor, I move that each member of Roanoke City Council certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under Chapter thirty-seven of Title two point two Code of Virginia Freedom, Virginia Freedom of Information Act. And two, only such business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was conducted through electronic communication means was convened, were heard, discussed, or considered in the meeting by the public body.
Is there a second?
Anita Price, second.
Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Miss White Boyd.
Here.
Mr. Best Pitch.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb.
Aye.
Ms. Osborne.
Aye.
Ms. Price.
Aye.
Miss White Boyd.
Aye.
You forgot me, Susie.
Okay, Ms. Davis.
Aye.
And and the motion passes. Thank you all very much. Uh thank you all for your patience uh while we were in closed session. We are pleased to announce that on May eighteenth- while we were in closed session. We are pleased to announce that on May eighteenth, Roanoke City Council will host a forum of all the seven applicants for the Roanoke City School Board Trustees position that will be held at five o'clock. And then following that, at seven o'clock, we are announcing a public hearing through which citizens will have the opportunity to speak and address this matter. So again, five o'clock, May eighteenth, a forum which will feature all seven applicants who applied for Roanoke City School Board. And at seven o'clock, a public hearing. An announcement will be produced for this in the coming week. And both meetings will be held by electronic communication as part of our regularly scheduled meetings that day. Dan, you want to add anything to that?
Thank you, Vice Mayor Cobb. Just to clarify, the forum is being held by the council for the council. The participants will be limited to the members of city council and the seven applicants.
Thank you for that clarification. Very important. All right. Thank you all very much.
I guess one other thing, just, and just with that harsh statement, I apologize to the public. The public will obviously have the opportunity to view the forum through the remote communications that we have afforded the public through all this, this process. Thank you.
So just to review that, this will be a forum hosted by council for council featuring the seven applicants to the Roanoke City School Board of Trustees. The public will have access to view, as we will. And then at seven o'clock, the public will have the opportunity to sign up to speak as part of the public hearing. And all of that information will be shared in the coming weeks. Thank you all very much. And with no further business to conduct, this session of city council is adjourned.
Thank you.